Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our twenty 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 three village board. Now, on September seventh, twenty twenty three, recent grant commission. The October tenth, twenty twenty four public safety committee, the October twenty fourth, twenty twenty three planning commission. The November sixth, twenty twenty three finance committee meeting minutes as presented only a motion in a second. A motion in a second, and the changes, additions, corrections.
So we're with Dan and the agenda here says that. For public safety committee, so just in case that's a title that's propagated elsewhere. Thank you very much.
Hey, correction in. Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Wish to be heard on agenda or on agenda. Go to business presented as the president, I've just been made aware that the last meeting. That was scheduled earlier in December was canceled at the end of the. There was consensus folks here that had said knew that I was going to be on vacation. And I can recall there were consensus of folks who said, well, let's just cancel the meeting and hold one later in the month. I want to go on record that not it was not a vote by the general village board, but instead it was a later agenda, I think. There was some consensus here that may just. Postponed for the meeting of the month up to this. Just want to make sure that's clear.
Yes.
Okay, let's go to item number six, approval. I'll approve the appointment of village graft and election inspectors for the twenty four. So I think this is pretty straightforward here, Katie, because it.
So they all expire at seven thirty first of the year. The major political parties. That list to the clerk. To have election inspectors pointed by political parties. Those lists were submitted and the potential election inspectors were. Reached out to and asked if they would like to continue. And those that are interested have submitted pay orders.
Very good.
Spectres for the.
Sorry, I just wanted to say, express my appreciation for all those willing to serve, including those who served on. Board or our village employees, I see recognize one of them, so thank you for being willing to serve. And be in this often thankless and very public way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, sweet.
Katie, do we have openings or are you pretty well stacked for the following two elections?
I am pretty well stacked. I have fifty four people. That's about the running, that's a little bit more than I usually, okay, so I am fully staffed at this point where I'm always looking for people.
Okay, so if somebody was interested, they could put their name and to you and fill in an application.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Any further. All right. Second, say aye.
Okay, go to present improving. Wage adjustment factor for nonrepresented regular village employees, this is pretty much done every year in office meetings, is that correct?
Here in the village of Grafton, for the village board to adopt a resolution to enact the budgeted cost of living adjustment. For nonrepresented village employees, a two percent cost of living adjustment was programmed, or what we call. In formal terms, a wage adjustment factor was programmed and adopted as part of the twenty twenty four budget. Therefore, the resolution is before the village board this evening, requiring an offer motion in a second.
Very good, so at this point in time, we will be looking to the table. Resolution, second, for. Factor. Second, upper motion, second.
Offer. Oh my.
Second.
Upper motion, second, any discussion on this? At me, so I'll take that as a no, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Go on to the report.
Let you, Jesse. I'll defer to.
Hi, Jessica, welcome, Merry Christmas.
And then take, I have seen that as a, seeing on my part, just as a technicality, would be better. Offenses and then the the P D zoning for the Grafton Creative.
Very good, so we're going to go to C as in Kat or Charlie. First, correct.
He isn't on.
He has been, okay, very good, thank you very much, so you can take this as three resolution. So any discussion on that one, to start off with, Jessica? Very good, so I'll be looking for, fix the three in one. Resolution recommending the public participation plan for the November twenty twenty three comprehensive plan amendment. Ordinance adopting the village of Grafton comprehensive plan amendment related to the Grafton Creative. At ten thirty two, ten thirty eight. Well, Avenue and the Locur subdivision at eight eight seven North Green Bay Road. And finally, a resolution recommending that the final plan of Riverbend Metals subdivision phase four. Second.
I was, I was gonna say, we may want to break these apart because we have. Yep.
Second, discussion, settle. Very good, so back down the road, are we taking, let's just go back. We have two resolutions and amendments, so are we doing this in both resolutions? Action on both resolutions. Let's take them one at a time, okay, one at a time. Okay, very good, resolution recommending the public participation plan for twenty twenty, November twenty twenty three comprehensive plan amendment be approved. Motion, upper motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, over resolution number three. For resolution recommending the final plan of Riverbend Metal subdivision phase four be adopted, and any discussion on?
Can I have a quick offer? Should I expect that?
Yes, please.
Offer.
Motion.
Second.
Upper motion, second. One in favor say aye. Okay, very good. Carries, over the ordinance recommending the village board adopt the village of Grafton comprehensive plan. Related to Grafton Creative, ten thirty two, ten thirty eight. Well, and the Locur subdivision at eight eight seven North Green Bay Road be adopted in the motion, second. Motion in second, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, now Jessica, we can go to B. Your resolution, B, yeah. All right, let's go to C as in. For on a ordinance recommending renewal of P V D plan by open zoning for Grafton Creative, ten thirty two, ten thirty. Well, Avenue, motion in a second.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Your motion in a second, any discussion on that? Favor.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. All right, now we'll go to B as in Bravo. Resolution approving the, sorry, our report of the planning commission.
All the way down, we did a lot of shuffling around there, yep. E one.
See, a little bit wrong. All right, we'll go to the report of planning. Three, that would be the discussion of assistant village engineer job description and placement within pay grade. That comes to the village board as a two vote at last month's plans committee. So. Let's get started on this, any other further discussion on this from you, Jesse?
Just that, an updated I F C was included with the packet. As there was significant discussion about the placement of the position. Within the village's pay structure. With that, Director Thomas did an excellent job in polling the American Society of Civil Engineers. As well as looking at nearby communities with regards to really. Making a case and kind of confirming that pay grade twenty would in fact be appropriate. For the assistant village engineer job position, so therefore staff's recommendation. Stands as requesting the village board approve. The assistant village engineer job description and associated placement in of the position into pay grade twenty.
All right, I want to throw a motion, brings to the table for discussion, motion to create. And placement within pay grade twenty, I'll need a motion in a second.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all right, discussion on this, I know it was kind of a.
I just want to know if it says that Jesse in the stat comments. The goal was to. Know village functions related to engineering, public works, construction projects and development projects. And to me, that means somebody with experience. That doesn't really align with somebody right out of college or new college background, in my opinion. I don't think I would allow somebody right out of college to run the fire department, police department, or. Operate on me. And and I I understand that you're requesting pay grade twenty. Because you're afraid you may not be able to find somebody, there's a lot of people out there. You know, maybe the supply is not as. High as you would like. But I worry about what this says to our our other employees. That we would hire somebody with not as much experience. When we have employees in pay grade twenty currently right now. Finance director, the assistant engineer. Who have more than probably twenty five years' experience separately, you know, each of them. And we are asking them to sit back and keep doing their job in the same pay grade as somebody. Knew that we're hiring in pay grade twenty, who may not have any experience, who may be right out of college. And that, and to 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 say that we're going to hire somebody, we hope they have experience, if we don't, we'll look at coming back and maybe. Adjusting their pay to something less. I just don't think that's right, and I worry that if people who are in pay grade twenty right now. If they don't think this is a good idea either, that they could walk. And so if those people would walk, we'd be without a finance director, we'd be without an operator in charge. And we'd be looking to Sockville to help us with that, so I worry about pay grade twenty. That is, to me, does not equal the experience that you're asking for, but you'll settle for a new grad, just like you said before.
I saw.
Just to try and add some clarity to that, I think an ideal candidate would definitely have a five years' experience in municipal engineering. Absolutely, and I think that's what we want to advertise, and that's what we want to recruit for.
Sure.
I'm just terribly worried, knowing the engineering markets, that we may not find anyone. With that experience, so I want the ability to kind of recruit for all levels. And I think it would be better to recruit for the level we want and the experience we want. And the pay grade we would pay somebody with that experience. If we can't get that, I thought it would be better to come back after work and say. We're unable to find that level, let's come back and renegotiate and talk about what we would think is appropriate pay for a new grad. If we have to get to that.
Sure, I do understand that, again, I worry about the two people we have in that pay grade that have been here for a while and have many years of experience.
Pay grade. There's an issue of internal equity there. Because if this position were to be a recent grad that is hired, it would be at the start of the pay structure. Excuse me, pay grade. And thus that, and because of our compensation system, the way it is. Set up, allowing folks to continue to move through the pay grades, that internal equity is actually maintained, the folks that are here in place. With experience, continue to move through the pay grade, so that spacing stays the same, now granted, if we don't. Update the pay structure at all, everybody maxes out at a certain time, but that internal equity aspect is actually addressed. If in fact, the individual that is most qualified. Applicant that we receive and we we choose to bring on board. The internal equity, frankly, I don't believe is a concern, because there are. There is space within the pay grade already between existing employees and anybody who may be new and of a lower experience level. But at the same time, this placement allows us to be competitive in an ultra competitive. Engineering market, right now, as we all know, the private sector is going gangbusters. Whether it be utility projects, housing projects, just general development, I mean, Sockville themselves. Is seeing a ton of development, as are we, that eats up a lot of engineering, I forty three is eating up a lot of engineering. There are folks that are very fortunate coming out of school right now as engineers, that are able to walk into the job market and private companies. Have a ton more flexibility than we do with regards to wages and or benefits. We're kind of locked in here, so we're making our best educated guess, quite frankly. With placing this in twenty, in pay grade twenty, with the data we understand, with the pulse as best we can of the private market. To ensure we're competitive, but yes, we do bear in mind internal equity, that is part of. Any of the jobs that were created here this evening, and the fact that if this is a newer, less experienced engineer. The other employees that are in pay grade twenty are well into the pay grade already, so that spacing is afforded.
Whenever. I didn't find somebody with. Then we were very fortunate to get for. All the hearing you say is that if we are recruiting that. We find someone that doesn't. You know, that just fits that criteria, or who may be a new grad. Versus being a P D or if you P A V were a P D, you know, P wherever it go, you would have the flexibility of. Back to saying, you know, I think you want to drop it, puts back down into nineteen, is that correct?
You don't get. Don't get any options and just have. Recent grads, like they could have potential, we have moved on back and say, hey, we need to drop a pay grade four, the applicants that have.
Or we say, can I, can I get some? And I'll go to.
I like the way you have it set up, can you put the pay grade nineteen down? Then you have the flexibility without having to come back.
Eyes the rub, I guess the the easiest way to explain it is above the line is the job title, the pay grade, right? The easiest way to explain it, anything above the line, I have to come forward to finance and the village board to change. Anything below the line, the the job duties, the functions, the the qualifications, that I have authority over as the administrator. But unfortunately, we're, yeah, it's. That's why we're having the discussion here this evening, if if I had those administrative rights, that would be great, but that's just not a function of our code and policy, so I I can't.
I'm I'm fine with that.
Or you said. Yeah, I'm content with where it is now, I appreciate what you've shared, Amber, about advertising to get somebody with that three to five years' desired experience. That has happened, come back, that position is nineteen where it should be at that, so.
Comment at all?
No, other than it's, it seems like. We're not going to try and get somebody at. At pay grade nineteen, but. It sounds like they're going to be hard to find, do we want to try it first?
I I would rather shoot for, I'd rather shoot higher, I'd rather shoot for the qualifications as we have set forth. And look to get that five years' experience engineer, potentially coming to us with municipal five years' experience as well. So I'd rather aim high to start and hopefully get that, ideally, we would get that. Versus strictly marketing for, or or limiting ourselves to a a recent college grad. You know, there there may be a rock star that comes out of M S O E, that that. Really does all things well, has excellent internship background, that that warrants coming in here. But we don't know that, but I'd rather set the bar a little bit higher and and see what we get first.
Because I don't think pay rate nineteen is. Oh. Make it sound like. That's not the special, we got to go to twenty to get. Application.
Uh, yes, based upon the the data that Director Thomas has put together and looking at our some of our peer communities. I do believe we need pay grade twenty, which is why we have brought that forward through finance to the village board. And provided this additional context, I do believe we need that. However, what what we're talking about here this evening, if the crop of candidates we receive don't warrant that. Then a follow up discussion may maybe necessary with with finance and village board to adjust that pay grade, but. I believe for us going out to market, we should put our best foot forward, hence the pay grade twenty recommendation.
My position remains the same as it did at the last finance meeting, I find, because my last question to you, Amber, is how long have you left this posting out there until you decide, like. Keep a timeframe in mind, if you don't get any action on it, for what?
Holidays, we will try and get it posted this week, ten, and then by completing it out in at least three weeks past the holidays to. See it and then maybe value for that.
We still.
Yeah, I just said one more question, so if you put it out there and you get people, and I'm assuming you're going to put the A out there also, because. That's what people are looking at, and people don't have experience, do you say to those people, oh. You know, that's the dad, you know, and see what they think, because you don't have the experience, you know, you might have some experience in school, I mean, that doesn't fit well either. I feel like then you're going to possibly lose that person out of school who might have gone for pay grade nineteen.
It is possible, I think if we don't get any qualified applicants with more experience, then I think we might come back here to have that discussion. Before we reach out to the applicants. Just so we don't get in kind of a.
Sure.
Awkward.
Yeah, okay, I, yeah, I just worry about our current place.
So as as somebody who's hired. That's suited. The most experienced over the. With that said, there does come time when there's an attractive candidate that comes along, may not have the experience. Could be groomed into that position. Reason why we would pay it twenty fourteen is because the nineteen is require a great deal more of her work to. Get them to the status, if you hire somebody with experiences, I mean, one of the last. So it might lead to, as I said, the best qualified candidate, and. Was directly related to an engineer knows, this month, my son gets out of the out of the military, he can pretty much paint his. His wage and wherever he wants to go, he's going to be with one of these. I think somebody with a P D of about five years' experience. Going to be able to come in here and leave different, so that would be my recommendation, we started one, taking out a rest, you guys coming back was. Find the, can't find the perfect candidate, we come back, so, you know, I think. So if that's said, any further discussion on this? All right. We have a motion in a second, we'll take a vote to this. Here, but I believe our recommendation, the action requested an approval of assistant village engineer job description and associated placement of the position. Twenty, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Got a motion, I think you've got the ayes and the nays. Finance Finance Committee, twelve eighteen, claims submitted by Mike Haisher, I believe we have sent that over to Public Works.
Correct, that has been referred to the board of public works, yes.
And the chief historian job description placement, pay grade eight. Everybody. Discussion, so, so with that. So at this point in time, we can have certainly have more discussion on that, but we recommended the village board. Job description, associated placement in a position. Eight for each eight, I'll need a motion in a second for further discussion.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Here, laughing.
I appreciate to see you and the staff bringing this to us for approval, I'd feel more comfortable with this at pay grade nine, given the additional duties that are. Ultimately, pay grade eight puts them at more or less the lowest paid employee of the world, I think circulation aid is the only one that's regular staff that is slower. And yet it's one of the most important jobs, public facing that we have, and so I would feel more comfortable at a greater high. To put forth the amendment to motion to approve it.
That is absolutely the purview of the board, the recommendation is as you've read and seen, but it is the purview of the board if you wish to update the motion.
You heard, Scotty?
Oh, boy, I had that in my budget breakdown, which I did not bring with me, I'm, I'm sorry, what we're paying right now. I believe offsets the majority of a full time position, I don't believe it fully offsets. But I don't want to misspeak with specific numbers because I don't have them in front of me. There is definitely a significant offset from. Getting rid of the contracted help and canceling those service contracts and applying that towards a full time position. There's definitely a significant offset there, but I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, so I don't want to misspeak.
I think we'll have a little higher cost with this position due to benefits, which we didn't have with the contracted. I could have thought, I think that it's too low. Like you said earlier, I think that the additional to these. Crazy as some of them are. Were it's higher than a pay grade eight, and I would. Clark would make a. A motion to amend that, I would second that.
Basically, we've got the motion from Mr. Miller, the second from Ms. Fenton. You would have to agree to any revision to your motion in second, if you feel pay grade nine is more appropriate than eight. But.
I think, I I think can can we maybe establish consensus on this to see if we would all agree to go to. Those in favor of keeping it at eight? Those wishing to go to nine.
It's gonna be interesting.
So, I agree with her here, so. Yep, absolutely.
We budgeted for placement within pay grade eight. That said, we always do budget conservatively in the fact that we budget for someone coming in. Approximately the midpoint with full family. Benefits, you know, so that said, moving to grade nine wouldn't be a backbreaker, if you will, we do have contingency funds budgeted. Within the twenty twenty four adopted budget as well, and also to overall revenues for the village. We always, always, always budget those very conservatively. So that said, I'll reiterate, moving the position from a grade eight, while that's where it's budgeted. Into a grade nine, I believe can be accommodated within the twenty twenty four budget.
Yeah, see there's.
Yep.
Yep. Still pretty cool.
You can maybe allow them to get some money.
I think I'll say exactly what I said when I came. Rather a qualified person who's. Getting there just over one.
Thank you very much. Okay, so um. I think we probably want to take a vote on that.
Can we simply revise? Pay grade nine.
Okay, so then I guess what we're going to do first.
Yes, correct. It would be a vote on eight and then reintroduced.
Take a vote on the folks in favor of the motion as presented at pay grade eight, say aye. Those at pay grade uh and those opposed. And so um then we'll have another motion for about pay grade nine.
That motion to approve this position at a great night.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Hopefully, both your all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Katie, you have that? Okay, thank you. Those people who say that the village of Grafton. So to the recreation program supervisor aquatics director job description. So what we'll do is we'll look for recommendations of the village board or uh a village board approval of the recreational program supervisor aquatics coordinator job description. And associated placement into position into pay grade thirteen, I'll need a motion in a second.
How second?
We have a motion in second, um any further discussion on this?
I have no comments to the discussion right.
Further discussions, I remember the finance committee. Okay, we will look for a vote on this um recommend. That we bring recreation program supervisor aquatics direct uh coordinator job description and associated placement. Of position into pay grade thirteen, all in favor, say aye. I oppose. Got that Katie? Very good, okay. Let's move on. Village class expression uh structural resolution. That point, um we were part of that discussion as well. We will need to have an offer motion in the second. Recommend uh the village board adopt a resolution to adjust midpoints in the maximum of the village class uh Grafton. Classations dropped by six percent based upon the market data present. Motion in a second, uh an offer of motion. Second, any further discussion on this part?
So Jentie, um I noticed that the table you put it in that attachment three. And so would you, um I guess the two part question, one, could you provide more context as to why I went recommendation put. Points upward and perhaps related to that, if we were to adjust the minimums, that idea of redboxing. Would that potentially impact current employee salaries that would require us to put more money into their salaries to bring them up to that? If we were to adjust the minimums.
And actually, I'm gonna go ahead and work backwards. Um that was part of the um decision making process, albeit not the primary. Um the fact that adjusting the minimums, because we do have a a decent number of new employees that were brought in. At the start of the pay grades, this would impact them where we would have to. Move them significantly and and create a lot of moving parts logistically with regards to payroll processing, but also within our budget as well that's been adopted. Um secondly, um we've been quite competitive um at that starting range. Um with folks that we brought in there, so I feel comfortable with that. Yes, you're right, um some of those percentages definitely do call our starting wages um. Uh may be out of whack, pardon the informal term, but we have been competitive with with our recruitments at that minimum. Um frankly, we have had folks come in higher than that, but we with our advertising, we have been competitive, so I did not feel it necessary to. Create those logistics per se, as we have the vehicle in place in our compensation system for those folks to continue moving through the pay scale. Um that said, the the data, as you point out, speaks to definitely expanding our um pay scales, the individual grades. The the width of them, um because that will help address um some folks we do have that are red boxed currently. Um but also help avoid um other employees getting to that red box stage, so. Um it actually serves a couple of purposes there um for the near term, but again, I would really emphasize the fact that. This is good data that we received and 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 synthesized out of um nearby communities' class comp studies. I will reemphasize the fact that, and I do intend you, I I will say you will see this as part of my twenty twenty five. Budget proposal, the need for a Grafton specific study, um the nuance and the deep dive and the granular. Um research that an outside consultant can do far outweighs um what staff can do um here internally.
Data that you presented suggests that something even a six percent might be said, although there's a lot of variability amongst some of the positions. Definitely all outliers. That experience, they're materially different. So I suspect that a higher adjustment is probably gonna be warranted, but I'm content with. To a formal study to demonstrate that, it may not be uniform among different pay grades, like we see at the very top. First pushing position, please, and suggesting that we're very, very low.
Yes, and 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 it is that series of nuances, if you will, where that that we took the average, you know, that that's. In essence, staff's capacity to come forward with a responsible recommendation to the board, to the finance committee and the board. With regards to updating our overall structure. Um that was our. Um again, our ability to bring forward a responsible um recommendation. That said, I I think twenty twenty five is a a different chapter for us where the need is there.
Um I'm for the six percent increase. Like the data you provided and we're not at the top of the average of comparables, but we're just a hair bit lower. Think uh. But deep deeper dive in the next two years would be.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other uh final comments here? Offer motion in second. Recommend or adopt the resolution. To Grafton classification structure by six percent based upon the market data.
Uh there's the recommendation coming out of the public safety committee to um enter into a new five year contract with flock safety for the license plate reading technology. Um these are the cameras we have here in the village, um and this does lock in pricing over the course of that um uh term.
Very good. So that did work through explaining to public safety committee, I'll be looking for a motion for. By the contract with block safety for license plate reading.
I'll send it.
Motion in second, any um additional discussion?
Was there any discussion with Chief Capanera on this, Jesse?
Uh he brought it forward to the public safety committee. Um I'm just simply the messenger here this evening, but it was uh fully vetted at public safety and brought forward the recommendation. Um and we look at it from an administrative and finance standpoint, um signing on to a longer term agreement, which sets forth known budgeting quantities. It actually assists us uh looking ahead with the uh creation of the future years budgets.
Maybe a motion in a second, favor say aye. Aye. Go to the P pass class action.
Yes, absolutely. Um the village was informed that uh class action. Um settlement has been reached with um DuPont and three M. Uh two large manufacturers of a group of substances known as PFAS. I'm not going to even try to. Um pronounce those as I gave up chemistry long ago and far away. That said, um the this this group of chemicals. Um are um towards uh coatings and cookware, waterproof clothing, firefighting foam. Uh primarily, um that said, these particular camel chemicals last multiple lifetimes when they get into the environment. Um that said, the um um settlement is for um um water. System, water provider systems, um Grafton Water Utility is one of those, um obviously. Um that's that said, we are subject to uh be able to participate opt in. Or we could choose to opt out of participating in the settlement. Um with this and the truncated timeline for uh response to the um decision that was needed. Uh we reached out to um Godfrey and Khan, who's a an environmental um law firm. That has helped us with various utility um matters uh regarding um our stormwater permit uh compliance, et cetera. Um and asked for a breakdown of their thoughts on the matter. That is attached to the um IFC. Uh really giving a a ten thousand foot, very simplistic look at it. The um. By opting in, which which the village has chosen to do, um we are. Reserving our spot in line, if you will, to obtain obtain compensation through the settlement uh uh. Through the settlement process that has been established by the court. If we opted out, that means we alone, as the village of Grafton, would have to go after three M and DuPont. We don't have the resources to do that, quite frankly. Um that would be a separate and distinct, long drawn out battle, and thankfully. We have very little PFAS detection, very minute detection within our system. Trace amounts, literally trace amounts, very minute. So that said. It would be a difficult hill to climb for us as we have, uh we do not have either one of those companies located directly here in Grafton. We do not have it, thankfully, do not have a significant amount of PFAS presence within our system. Um so it would be a difficult uh road to hoe for us alone. As a municipality, therefore opting in gives us that right in line for the settlement, which we are looking in the neighborhood of about. Um um a million dollars from uh. Three M and about another one hundred thousand dollars from DuPont. Those are estimates right now as the court has to finalize the calculations. Based upon data that is submitted. We minimize the risk of losing financial compensation if one or both companies claim bankruptcy. Um they're giant, but they are still not too big to fail, as we have seen with recent economic uh um climate. So that said, we want to make sure we're in line to be able to receive something with through this settlement. Uh we do retain rights against other manufacturers of PFAS chemicals. So yes, by opting in to this settlement. Um we could not go after three M or DuPont for um PFAS in our water system, however. We reserve the right to go after other manufacturers of it, and we reserve the right to go after three M and DuPont if PFAS. Shows up in our stormwater system or our sanitary sewer system. So by opting in, we are not giving up all rights here. Um so that is a favorable consideration as well, um and therefore um staff. Following um some sound advice from Godfrey and Khan, who we reached out to and have worked closely with on this uh matter. Um did opt into the um settlement as set forth by the courts.
Good. Any questions at all on this?
Due to the time constraints and importance of this decision, he decided we need a defendant. I think I should say a plaintiff.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. No, appreciate that. Yep.
I guess I'm concerned that this could have, and I think should. Come to the full village board. We're talking about getting um over a million dollars. For um you know, these problems, and I don't think that the time the time constraint, I think it was overlooked. And I think that the board should have been able to rule and vote that yes, this is something that we accept. Um we got the letter over a month ago and Godfrey and Khan gave you the letter, I think two weeks ago and. I think it was just decided at staff level that you guys would just do it, and I don't understand that. Um I would ask that in the future, something like this where we're talking about a million dollars, obviously, the board would say. Yes, please apply, please get on board, but I think this should have been a village board decision and not. Don't worry about it, you know, we'll make the choice at the step. So I would prefer it not to have been information only. There was time that we could have, the village board could have met and. And voted on.
Sure, I guess I looked at it from my standpoint as the board tasked me with day to day oversight and making decisions on behalf of the village. Um in certain areas outside of meetings, that we were in line for a settlement versus. Getting in a different line, which could potentially cost us that and more to go after these large companies. So I felt in the best interest of the village to put us in a position to receive settlement dollars. Versus incurring legal costs to chase an unknown amount. Um that said, it's not a matter of a willy nilly decision by staff. We wanted to make sure we brought this forward and explained it to the village board, that this is what the village is in line for, based upon these facts. Um so really, just again, staff working on in the best interest of the village. To put us in position here and making sure that we update the board accordingly and making sure we do so in a public meeting. That way, folks have an opportunity to see this in the packet and understand what we're participating in.
Thank you. I think that I think we all were rather at a golden hour. All right, any other discussion on that?
Yes. Uh just a couple of quick items, uh just a note that January ninth, the Veterans Park Pavilion bids are due. We're very excited to have that project out for bid, um as the design process came to fruition through help with the park and rec board and the architectural review board. Um and we are at a point where we're bidding it, um and those are due January ninth. Um looking forward to see what the results are. Um tax collection is ongoing, um tax bills were issued earlier this month. Um just by way of context, last year at this time, the village had collected three point six million dollars. Um year to date, um or so far this year, same timetable, we are actually above that at four point one five million dollars. It's not a matter of us um putting forth or levying more taxes per se, it's a matter of. Collection rate statistic, and it's just kind of interesting how that will ebb and flow over the course of the collection season. Uh with that, I have no other um updates uh from the administrator's office other than to wish the board a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Jesse, and thank you, Mr. All right, uh we'll move on here to uh request for operators license on. Need a motion to. A motion in second, any discussion on uh this group of folks? On scene, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, not much in periods, and now we have a rather unusual situation. Stayed close, um uh approved the denial of issuance of uh. Operator's license.
I I will leave it at a uh very high level, um just to say that um the applicant has demonstrated a habitual um criminality conduct interactions. Um and therefore, um through the standard background uh check, if you will, with regards to all operators licenses. The um police chief and police department are recommending denial. Um all of the details are set forth in the IFC, but again, simply leaving it at a high level, there is a definite um. Habitual activity um that is of concern, and therefore we are recommending denial.
I entertain a motion to deny the issuance of operator's license to Tammy Renee Roberson. She denied.
I'll second.
Motion in second, any further discussion? Yes, thank you. All in favor say aye? Motion to deny. Recommendation of the police chief. Lastly, let's look at the report of the bills, I did see a late one come in this afternoon and some other ones that came in, uh late one is on. Um the motion uh to approve the ability to spend yours. Seven hundred sixty-two thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars and seventy cents.
I'll move to approve.
All right, any discussion on this, any other questions? Great, two looks, says no. Um we'll look for a vote here, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, a look for the motions adjourned and Katie. No motion in second, all in favor say aye. Aye, Merry Christmas to Paul, see you next year.